May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Felchah.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio. Absent.
We thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. To the south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. To the south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. To the south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out 32 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Thank you all for coming today. I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the Planning Commission and the City Council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the Commission will give a recommendation to the City Council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the City Council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the virtual room. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City engineering and water utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning,
May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Felchaw.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, councilmember Neil, councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Absent. We thank you all for coming today. I'm just going to be explaining a little bit about what's getting ready to happen. We have a joint public hearing today between the planning commission and the city council. The reason why we have this together is so anyone applying for whatever you're here for does not have to come back twice because today is the day for the public hearing. Today, the commission will give a recommendation to the city council on how they believe that these items need to go. And after that, in about two weeks, sometimes one, sometimes two, depending on the item, they'll come back to the city council for final approval. But today is the day that it's a public hearing, so today is the day that anyone can speak for or against any one of these items. When it comes before the council, it will not be, you will not be able to speak on them because it is a posted item as a joint hearing today. But of course, you can always contact your councilmembers in the usual way. But today is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-128. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
I noticed you have a lot of easier stuff today.
Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-75. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit and a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling and NC Neighborhood Commercial to GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, to allow for a coffee shop. And again, this is a continuation of the item we had on the joint meeting regarding the abandonment of the alleyway. Grant Keller of Vaquero Ventures is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a coffee shop at 3154 Shannon Avenue. The proposed coffee shop would be located just south of the existing Sonic, just south of Washington on Martin Luther King Parkway. The greatest obstacle for this request is the existing sewer line located within the alleyway, and it's across the middle of the property. A request, as we discussed prior, has been submitted to abandon that alleyway and reroute the sewer line. City Engineering and Water Utilities are in discussion with the applicant regarding the sewer line issue. Although the majority of the property is currently zoned RS Residential Single Family, it is located adjacent to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily zoning, commercial uses in the area, and partially fronts MLK, which is a major arterial street. And let me go ahead and outline the development. Again, the property in question is here with RS zoning in yellow. The NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning is here in the bright pink. And again, adjacent to the north is the Sonic, its existing GCMD. To the southwest is Neighborhood Commercial, and then to the southeast is General Commercial. So the idea with this, this whole area would be rezoned to GCMD 2. And again, this is the proposed coffee shop, the alleyway in question here with the sewer line running through it. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see MLK running here at the top of the screen, the existing Sonic restaurant here, the alleyway we discussed earlier running through here. This is a view of the subject property. Also, the subject property. A view to the north. The northwest. The west. The south. To the east. So again, based on the proposed use, the existing zoning in the area as well as the existing land, the existing land uses in the area in approximation to Martin Luther King, staff is recommending approval of this application. I should note, we did send out thirty-two notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor other than the applicant and owner, and zero responses in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning and also recommending approval of the specific use permit subject to the following conditions. Number one is approval is subject to any agreement between, between the applicant, City Engineering, and Water Utilities regarding the alleyway sewer line. Number two, landscaping to be installed as per city ordinance. And number three, sidewalks to be installed and maintained along all three street frontages. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
We do have the applicant in the audience. He's already been here, so I'm not going to trouble him to get up and speak again. But I do open the, the meeting to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff. We also heard previously from the applicant. Is there a motion?
I have a motion with three conditions to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Congratulations, sir, and welcome to Beaumont. Okay, Mr. Boone, PZ 2021-128.
Okay. File PZ 2021-128 is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a mortuary. I should point out that when we received the application, it was a specific use permit from Como Community Mortuary and Crematory. And so we did advertise it as mortuary and crematory in an RCR district at 3510 Sarah Street. Since the time of the application, it has been pointed out that Como Community Mortuary and Crematory is actually the only one to do funeral services and not a crematory. So we did want to point that out. But having said that, Como Community Mortuary and Crematory LLC is requesting permission to allow a mortuary at this location. The project includes a thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve square foot structure and one hundred and ten parking spaces. The property is located less than a quarter mile from at least three churches and would be easily accessible for services. And let me go ahead and show you. This is the property in question outlined in red. This is a view of the proposed site, site plan on the site. You can see the parking along Sarah and the proposed building here. Aerial view of the proposed mortuary. This is a view of the subject property. View to the north. View to the east. To the south. The south. Southwest. The west. And I should point out, we, we did mail out twenty-four notices to area property owners. We did receive zero in favor other than the applicant. We received two in opposition. One was from DM Starcrest out of Dallas, Texas. I believe that's the apartment complex to the north that we saw a photograph of earlier. And their opposition is this is a residential area and therefore a commercial use of, for profit for a crematory mortuary should not be allowed. This site should be residential use that can take advantage of the recreation center located across the street. And the second response in opposition was from a Ms. Garrett on 4110 Nisi Street, which is a nearby residential, and she simply has responded that she is not in favor without comments. However, based on the application proposed and the surrounding land use, staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the final, the following conditions. Number one, final plans will need to meet all requirements of the city's FOG, FATs Oil and Grease Backflow Program. And number two, landscaping to meet City of Beaumont ordinance requirements. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Yes, sir. My name is Andre Como, representing Como Community Mortuary Informations. When we turned the application in, it was never our intent to have a crematory there, only offer cremation services which are done off-site. I've been in touch with Mr. Marsaw, Troy Marsaw, purchased the Y, and he was supposed to be here today. Something came up. But I do have his support and the support from the pastors there. The things that will be done, hours of operation, the noise level will be nothing no more than the churches that are in the area, all within probably, what, five hundred feet, sir? Yeah, there are three churches there. But like I said, there will be no, no actual cremations on-site. We'll just be providing cremation service, which is actually done in Bridge City. That, that was always our original idea.
Okay. Anything else? And you heard the, the two complaints or two negative comments about this being a residential area and for the commercial use not being applicable. So you have any comments on that?
No, sir. I'm not sure. The old Y is right across the street. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the plans with that. That's getting ready to be a, a medical facility, which is directly across the street. And the church that's going to be right next door, which is who we acquired the land from, they're surrounded by churches. Our hours of operation are going to be similar to the hours, and we won't create no more of a, a noise level or anything like that than the churches.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the gentleman?
We didn't get his name and address.
My name is Andre, A-N-D-R-E, last name Como, C-O-M-E-A-U-X. And the address of the property is 3510 Sarah Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. If you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record and any comments you might have.
Yes, sir. My name is Chris James. I reside at 4120 Nisi Street. Right? And this property will back up directly against my backyard, and I'm against it.
Yes, sir.
Well, before I found out about the crematorium, pollutants was my concern. But even though I agree with the apartment complex, there, we're raising families in that neighborhood. Sarah is already a busy street where the speed limit is the norm in normal neighborhoods. And I just don't think, I think high traffic will, will stem from this, and that's one of my concerns.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We close the public hearing. Mr. Como, you've heard the gentleman. Do you have any comments? He is worried about the traffic.
No, sir. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think traffic is going to increase any more than it is there with the facility that's going to be open across the street.
All right. Thank you. We have heard from the staff, the applicant, and also the citizen. Is there any questions or comments or a motion?
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
They can add a fence, eight foot or ten foot, in the back so that will minimize any noise for the resident.
Is the fence required, Mr.? The fence is already required. The landscaping ordinance requires a fence.
Yeah, the, an eight-foot fence and a ten-foot landscape buffer will be required along the west side, which would be between the, between this facility and then the residential properties that face Nisi.
All right. Thank you. With that, is there a motion?
I approve PZ 2021-128 with the condition.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Como. Mr. Boone?
I just, on the next one, that's PZ 2021-129. This is the request for a specific use permit to allow a gaming site at 8440 Phelan. We did receive a message this morning from Stephanie Weitzel, who was listed as the applicant, that she did not make application, did not authorize application for this item. So we're requesting that it be held over to the next meeting until we can get it sorted out.
Just for my information, is this across from the Family Dollar or was the Family Dollar building?
It's on the corner with the new convenience store, strip center that's being built, right, right on the corner of Phelan and Major.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Boone, let's go to PZ 2021-133.
Okay. File PZ 2021-133 is to consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow a training facility for Entergy Texas in an RCR Residential Conservation Revitalization District at 4950 Plant Road. Michelle Hawkins of Energy Texas, Inc. has submitted an application requesting addition and expansion of the training facility at the Energy Helbig Substation at 4950 Plant Road. A specific use permit for a temporary training facility was approved in nineteen eighty-one and extended to allow for extra classrooms and parking in nineteen ninety-four. An S U P was also approved in twenty nineteen for expansion of the substation. Plans at this point are to construct a new state-of-the-art permanent training facility. This location will serve the entire Entergy service area, including Texas, Louisiana, Arkansas, and Mississippi. The property may also serve as a storm staging area if needed. And let me go ahead and walk you through the aerial view of the property in question outlined in red. And this is the proposed site plan. And you see the... And this is an aerial view of the property. Subject property. View to the north. The south. And we did mail twenty-four notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero responses in favor, zero responses in opposition. Based on this application, staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, landscaping be provided per City of Beaumont ordinance requirements. And number two, that a sidewalk be provided along Plant Road. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you. I do believe the applicant is in the audience.
All right. Great. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I will. My name is Gene Crager. I'm with CDFL Architects and Engineers. Our address is 3221 Old Canton Road, Jackson, Mississippi, 39216, and I am here representing Entergy Texas.
Great. Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
I would just share that this site and facility, this area has been used for training, as you said, for a number of years. Prior to the beginning of this year, there were a couple of buildings there that were mobile-type buildings and of a temporary nature, and those have now been removed to make way for a new permanent facility. And as far as the siting and the impact on that, when you looked at the site plan, there are a couple of drives that are already in place, and then the training area, and then the substation, all of those things are there. With our new design, we're able to fit the new permanent facility in the location that the two temporary facilities were. So we're not really expanding a whole lot onto the site other than to provide additional parking and landscaping and sidewalks and all the other things that the city requires.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant and also the staff, and we know of the two conditions for the approval, and I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with two conditions.
We have a motion to approve. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone?
Okay. File PZ 2021-134 is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a boat and RV storage facility in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District at the property at 8200 Phelan Boulevard. Will Jake and Elaine Henderson, our partners, are requesting permission to allow a boat and RV storage facility at this location. The property will be used, also be used as an indoor baseball training facility. The storage facility in question will consist of fifty-five storage units requiring a specific use permit. Let me go ahead and walk you through the proposal here. Outlined in red is the site on Phelan Boulevard. And this is the proposed site plan. Little hard to read, maybe easier to read in your packet, but again, an aerial view of the proposed development. View of the subject property. To the north. Also to the north. View church to the east. View to the south. View to the west. And based on the proposed use and the surrounding land uses, staff is recommending approval. I should point out, we did send out fifteen notices, received zero opposition, zero in favor. Staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, all exterior lighting will be directional and should be shielded away from the neighboring properties. Number two, landscaping shall be provided as required by the ordinance. And number three, a sidewalk shall be provided along Phelan Boulevard for the length of the property. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
And the applicants? Good afternoon, sir. How are you today?
Good. How are you?
Very well. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's William Henderson, and it's going to be 8200 Phelan Boulevard in Beaumont, 77706.
Mr. Henderson, how do you mix both storage with baseball?
Well, I have a baseball background, both me and my, both my brother and I have a baseball background, and it's currently being used as a, as a baseball facility. So when we set out to do this project, we were initially going to do just a, a baseball training facility, high-end baseball training facility that Beaumont currently does not have. And we decided to go in and make the best use of this property and encompass something else that Beaumont really needs, which is actually fifty-foot-deep boat and RV enclosed storage. And so the way we have this property designed is, I don't know if they can see the, they can see it in their packet there on the site plan, is you have on the eastern and western sides of this property, you have a fifty-foot, you have fifty-foot-deep units running the length of the property, and they're all fifteen-foot-wide units enclosed. And then in the back northeast corner, you have thirty-five-foot units for meeting the, the requirements for the setbacks, because that northeastern eighty-seven point five feet is against residential. When we designed this middle building, being a hundred-foot wide with double-sided storage, the first hundred and ninety-five feet, which is up against Phelan Boulevard, is going to encompass a baseball training facility with cages, pitching mounds, office space, technology. The back hundred feet, which is partitioned off after meeting with, we had a pre-development meeting with the city, partitioned off to have a one hundred by one hundred indoor baseball field. It's fully netted. There is another one like it in Beaumont, but it's not designed to where you can actually go in there and hit, you know, in a wide-open space. So that's kind of how it came together, and that's where, that's where we're at. Doesn't seem like two and two get together, but I think it's going to work out pretty nicely.
Great, okay. Well, thank you. And you said you already had gone through the pre-development with the city?
Yes, I have, and I wanted to thank them for that, for giving us that opportunity to meet with a pre-development meeting so we could meet those requirements that, for the, for the landscaping, the irrigation, the setbacks, the whole nine yards, the stinger fire hydrant, you name it.
Great, great, alright, thank you very much. Is there any questions for the gentleman?
Do we have enough parking spaces for...?
Yes, the parking, there, we actually, in the pre-development meeting, we went through and we're looking for the classification that adheres to the, their current number of spaces. And we did end up finding a baseball facility use-type parking. And we have currently twenty-nine spaces, which is actually above the required parking for that type of use. Now, for the actual boat and RV storage itself, there's actually none required according to the city court, city, the city codes and the parking index. So we, according to the site plan, should be actually above the required parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, ma'am? If you would state your name and address for the record, please, I would love to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Judy Melling, M-E-L-L-I-N-G. And my husband and I live at eighty-two oh five White Road, and that's oh-six. And our property is directly adjacent to this property. And I never did return my questionnaire, but I just wanted to say we are in favor of it.
Well, that's very kind of you to drive all the way down here for that. Thank you, ma'am. Please, go ahead.
And also her next-door neighbor, which is Mike and Karen Fulgens. I've spoken with him on the phone. He was going to try to be here today, but he couldn't get back from Houston. He is in favor. And then the third adjacent residential property owner is my mother, and she's a partner, so.
Well, you better be nice to her. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir, go ahead. Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm Alan Kramer, and my son participates in his baseball teachings, him and Jake. And they put on a top-notch clinic, and I have no doubt they would do the same with this property here.
You think that'd be good neighbors?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. It's a, the residential backs up on the other side, and it's not close.
Alright, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Man, I wish I had friends like that. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? No other person's volunteering, so we close the public hearing. We have heard from the staff and the applicant and all the nice people to come and tell us about it. And with that, we're going to ask for a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
PZ twenty twenty, one thirty-four, with addition. Thank you, we have a motion, and the second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Boone? Twenty-one, one thirty-five.
File twenty-one, one thirty-five is to consider a request for the conveyance and dedication of private streets and infrastructure to the city of Beaumont. Alan Kramer, president of Wood Hollow Town Homes Association, homeowners association, has requested that the city of Beaumont accept maintenance of the private street known as Wood Hollow Town Homes Private Drive and its infrastructure. The city recently adopted a process for the conversion of private streets and other infrastructure to public ownership and maintenance. And we have included a copy of that policy in your staff report. In addition, we have also, as, as spelled out in the policy, has included comments and analysis of the city departments regarding the application. But let me go ahead and just show you the private streets in question. You can see, this is East Tex, I think just out of frame to the north is Delaware, I believe. And so this is the property in question, outlined in red. And you can see, these are the private streets here, here, and here, and here, for each of the units in the development. This is a view of the north-south drive. This is also a view of some of the drives that access the parking areas. And Dana, can you back it up to the overview, please? And again, based on that application, we have gotten some analysis of the current infrastructure as outlined in the, the conversion policy. And in response from the Public Works Engineering Group, their comments are to reject the request because essentially it is a parking lot. Water Utilities has commented that the review of the plat and construction plan shows the water lines are located within utility easements dedicated to the city of Beaumont. Therefore, the city currently maintains the existing water lines. The sewer lines are not marked on the plats or construction plans. It is recommended to reject the request until the sewer lines are located and reviewed. The fire department, Fire Marshal Candina, has commented, he's reviewed the site and stated that the property is more of a driveway and not a street. It is recommended to reject the request because it, because it is essentially a parking lot. Solid Waste has commented that they will not be able to offer residential garbage or heavy trash pickup to these units, as there is no place for the garbage cans. So again, if you look at the attached policy, it's, it basically outlines that the planning commission, well, applications are made to city staff. Again, it's routed to city departments to take a look at what is the existing infrastructure on the ground, and then to make recommendation to first the planning commission, and then the planning commission would make recommendation to the city council for a final determination on whether or not these private streets should be converted to public street. And in essence, you know, the criteria as to, as to whether or not that makes sense is primarily about the infrastructure, but it's also about whether or not it, it would make sense, not just for these property owners and these taxpayers, but does it make sense for the entire city to convert private drives to public drives? And based on, based on this application and the comments from the city department, we are recommending denial of the application. I should note, we did send out, I think it was fifty-five notices, mostly to the property owners of the, of the townhomes. We have received thirty-nine in favor in response. But again, these are from the, the property owners within the development. But again, based on the application, we are, is there more? Twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-nine responses in favor. But again, based on the application and the comments by city departments, staff is recommending denial of the application. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant, yes, ma'am?
Just fifteenth street, they're straight into their parking area?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's how they get in?
Yes, ma'am.
Fifteenth, which is a public street?
Yes, so the public street ends essentially right here.
So the rest of that is just where they go and park under the covered parking, etc. There's no through street, kind of?
So there is an extension of this driveway which terminates here, but there is no connection to the south. But this, this driveway does connect to the perpendicular drives, which again, go to the parking areas. But yes, to your, to your question, the public street ends here.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Alan Kramer. Address is eighty-two ten White Road, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 oh six. And I'm the president of the HOA for Wood Hollow, and been assigned for this task. I had some literature or pictures that I wanted y'all to see. Can I pass these out?
Go ahead.
Some of it is the same picture that you just saw, about the condition of the property and the streets and that. So the first page is just kind of an aerial of the units. Once you come off of Sixteenth Street, which is the public street, it goes into private property, and it forms a figure eight. So there's, fire trucks would have no problem getting out of there, getting wherever they needed to with the figure eight. The streets are like twenty-five feet wide, and plenty of room. Page two is where Sixteenth Street dead ends. The asphalt part there is the city street. It's only about nineteen feet wide, and you can see it's deteriorating where it meets the, or asphalt street. And then turns into twenty-five foot wide. Page three is a shot from Delaware, looking south at the city street that is asphalt. And then page four is a shot, south looking north, inside the private area. The next page is the east side of the property, looking north. Still twenty-five-foot-wide streets to get around. The next page is same area. As you can see, there's carports for every unit out there. There's fifty-five units. Each unit has two assigned parking spaces.
How many square feet you got here, Curtis? How many square feet do you have in units?
They're about thirteen hundred square feet. They're all two bedrooms, bath and a half. So two cars, parking works very well for them. Okay, and then there's a, next page is a shot of the figure eight of the middle street. And then if you get to, I think it's about the eighth or ninth page, there's some shots of some additional parking on the property. If you can see, there's a dumpster there, and there's parking on both sides of that. The next one, where the, where the street dead ends in a section, there's more private parking. And then across the street from the units, there's, there's about five more parking, private parking spots that the HOA owns. The next to last page, these pictures were taken today when we were getting a monsoon out there. And you can see the water draining. We've never had a flooding issue out there. Property drains really well because of that flow right there. And then the last page, this is a property over on, it's in Highland Estates, three, on Park Lane, and it's right off of West Lucas. This was a private street that was taken over by the city a couple of years ago. These streets in here are only like twenty feet wide, and there's only about seven houses in there that it, that it services. So the city took this over, and at Wood Hollow, we already have water. We already have sewer. We just don't have garbage access. We've, in the past, we've had individual containers, such as what the city uses, to pick up the trash. Right now, we've converted over to dumpsters, but our residents out there really want to have Beaumont City Services as far as trash pickup. I don't see the reason why, why we can't have that. And so just on the trash pickup that the city of Beaumont is missing out on, fifty-five units times twenty dollars a month for lack of trash pickup, that's eleven hundred dollars a month. The other place was only seven residences, which only collects a hundred and forty dollars a month. That was taken over by the city. Also, that area was about eight hundred and fifteen feet, a street that was taken over for seven residences. And this one is about fourteen hundred and eighty-eight square feet. So roughly about twice the size, but this property services fifty-five residences compared to seven. And this is why we are requesting this.
Alright, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir. Good afternoon. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jose Havelosa, and I'm currently a resident of the Wood Hollow Town Homes, section two, unit thirty-one. And just, just kind of to, you know, say, say why, you know, the residents there will need the trash pickup. I don't think it would be a problem. In the past, Mr. Kramer has done a great job in, in trying to get the, the whole town home community very, very clean, and has done really, really great job in keeping the maintenance on all the roadwork. Been there for three years, and, and then as they say, the Sixteenth Street, where it is the, where it is the public and private, I don't see why not, couldn't just be named to come around it, because technically, there's no parking. That's not considered a parking lot, that's a town home. And if, if a street will come down like, like you see on the picture, all the way down and just turn, make a circle back out, technically, that's Sixteenth Street. If I put that on my GPS, it, it would be Sixteenth Street. I mean, have you guys seen the pictures? He has done a great job with the maintenance. That big old acreage area right there, that, that's kind of adjacent to the property, they have come out and got a contractor to trim all the leaves and, and the, and the trees that were kind of touching over the, the property. So I think overall, I don't see why not, why we, we know, it would not be a problem for, you know, to have the city take over that portion of the property. But kind of that's it, that's all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? No additional ones heard, so we close the public hearing. Mr. Boone, do you have any comments about the previous project that was accepted?
I guess my only thought is, council, or yes, planning commission and council has approved a few of these in the past couple of years. They are reviewed on a case-by-case basis. I think a good way to look at it again is, is what does the infrastructure look like? And, you know, but for the fact it's a private street, does it make sense that it would be a public street? And so you, you, I think you have to look at that. The other thing is, you know, we do have a number of private developments with private drives. And so you, you have to evaluate that, you know, at some, at some time, at some point, you know, you, we may get requests for apartment complexes with driveway access. And so, you know, they have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. with driveway access, and so, you know, they have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. But based on the comments we have from city departments, we are recommending denial.
And this has been reviewed by the fire, by the city, and the utilities, correct?
Yes, sir. So Water Utilities, Public Works, Engineering, Fire Department, and Solid Waste.
And all of them had the same opinion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
How wide, let's see, I don't have that in the report. I can say that, is it sixteen? The main North-South Street is fairly wide. I would say it's as wide as a normal city street.
Twenty feet wide, yeah.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's as wide as a standard-sized street. The perpendicular streets, though, are narrower, I believe.
David, twenty-five feet, I'll serve.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boone? All right, we had the, heard from the staff, we also heard from the applicant, we did hear the public, and now I would entertain a motion. The motion is to deny the request by the applicant.
I have a motion to deny.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Madam Mayor, before we continue, I'd neglected to welcome a visitor we have today, a Mr. Brady Babcock is a young architectural student, goes to the little tiny school up on the other side named A and M, and he's here to visit with us today, and gonna be hanging around our staff for a couple of days, just to see what we do and how we do it. So I'll welcome him to the meeting, and I hope that he would continue with his study and graduate, and come back to Beaumont, and make this home, and also join our ranks and do volunteer work as we all have. Thank you. So welcome, Mr. Babcock.
So he's right here, he's being shy. Thank you. And I don't think they were here yet, so since you stopped the meeting, I will also be up to new council members, I think they came in, Councilmember Turner and Durya. I thought I saw them, I mean, they're really getting.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. We'll see you soon again. Mr. Boone, you've done such a good job, it's only four-eleven, and we only got the last one to go.
One.
So don't mess it up.
All right. We'll try. All right, our final item is PZ twenty-two thousand one thirty-six. That's to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a bar poker room in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, at seventy-two eleven East Tex Freeway. Larry Bibbs is requesting permission to allow a bar poker room at this location. A poker room actually is allowed by right in this type of zoning district, but the bar component of this use does require the specific use permit. Admission to the poker room will be by membership only, according to the applicant. Time slots will be purchased by members for the desired playtime. Plans are to open with a beer and wine license, and then progress to a full bar. Food will not be prepared on-site. And it should be noticed that the, noted that the existing shopping center has adequate parking to accommodate the requested use. And let me just go ahead and walk you through, this shopping center where the proposed use is located is outlined in red, and again, this would be the northwest corner of East Tex and one-oh-five. This is a view of the site plan of the shopping center. An aerial view of the shopping center. A view of the subject property. View to the north. To the west. And we did mail eighteen notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor, we did receive three in opposition. Deena, do you mind going back to the overview of the zoning, please? Two of the responses, actually, we have four, but two are from the same property, and it's from the International Union of Operating Engineers. I believe they have a property back here. They're opposed to the proposal, their comments are, "We are not in favor of this request, please notify us of any additional hearings." We also have opposition from one-oh-five Rentals, and they state they're in opposition, and also state, "Family with small children, not in our best interest." And then finally, from Monterey Rentals, we also have no, we do not feel like a poker room, bar room is good for the neighborhood. So we do have those comments in opposition. As mentioned prior, a poker room, game room, we have two currently in the city of Beaumont, and this would be the third that we're aware of, and they are, with regards to zoning, they are an allowable use in GCMD. However, with the bar aspect of this proposal, again, that's what is requiring the specific use permit. So based on the proposed use, based on the zoning and the land used in question, we are recommending approval of this application with no conditions. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
The other poker rooms, do they have a liquor license?
I don't believe so.
Is security a requirement?
No, no more than normal. So there's no special security required. Now, as a condition of a specific use permit, you could possibly add a security component, and that's done from time to time, but there's no automatic security requirement.
Now, security is required for places that serve alcohol, right, or not?
I'm not aware that that's required. Not aware it's required.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. May I be visit with you? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Larry Bibbs, and I'm representing the House of Cards Poker Club. My address is eight-two-three-five Webb Lane here in Beaumont.
You said the poker club, so this is an existing organization somewhere?
This is gonna be our first rule.
Okay, all right, great. Explain to me how this works, and you have to forgive my lack of knowledge, but how does, one of these doesn't turn into a full-fledged gambling place with a whole bunch of people throwing money around?
There are actual, actually, there are probably over fifty poker rooms right now operating in Houston, and, you know, different cities around Texas. And what would, you know, prevent it from getting out of control is the fact that you do have rules and regulations that you have to follow. Like, you can't just operate like a casino operates. You can't take any money off of the table that's actually being, you know, played with amongst the members of the club. The way that, you know, this place would make its money is gonna be off of memberships, a door fee for people to pay to enter, and if, let's just say, you ladies and gentlemen decided y'all want to sit at a table and actually play, you would pay to rent the seat that you're actually sitting at by the hour. We also, you know, the other two poker rooms that, you know, are in Beaumont, they do not have a liquor license, and as far as the security concerned, that's, to us, that's, you know, that's something that we're gonna have regardless, you know, because people will feel more comfortable, you know, knowing that there is security, you know, during the hours of operation. And that's exactly what we're trying to provide, a comfortable setting, you know, where people can just come and enjoy playing poker.
What are the hours of operation?
Right now, we are talking about possibly open up at noon, possibly, possibly ten o'clock. It just depends on how, you know, what the feedback is once we open up, but right now, we're in, you know, talks of opening up at noon, and just closing down whenever our last game concludes. Like, in Houston, there are places that run twenty-four hours, it's a much bigger market. We don't see us being a twenty-four hour establishment here in Beaumont.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you were talking about no money on the table, is it like a virtual-type setup?
No, ma'am.
I know people are there, but exchanging money does happen.
Right. You buy, this is what happens, you go, and in this aspect, it is sort of like a casino, you buy chips to play with.
Okay.
And on the table, you're gonna, you know, transfer chips back and forth. That is what, you know, you will be using to play with, basically. But when I say no money, it's gonna, correct. Yeah, it's not like the video poker machines or anything like that. This is gonna be actual nine, ten people physically playing poker with the dealer, you know, at the table.
So the house does not take money off the table?
No, sir. No, so there's no rake, no.
What are you, maybe it's your feet?
You're already joking, aren't you?
I wouldn't listen.
Most of the people, they sign up, and they're gonna pay just as they come, like, and it's gonna be a ten-dollar entry fee.
Again, though, what keeps this, and with all due respect to you, I just, I'm not familiar, what keeps this from evolving from poker into other gambling over there?
Me?
Okay.
I'm not, I mean, this is what is gonna be a poker club, it's not gonna be like backroom craps and anything other than a poker club. No, I guess you can say, like, sports betting, none of that, it's just gonna be professional poker.
Any other questions for the gentleman? If you allow me one second, anything else from here? No, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna open the floor for public comments, so please go ahead and, if you'd be kind enough to come over and state your name and address, and we'll listen to you.
That's what we're about, councilmen.
I understand, thank you.
Even I'm a councilman.
You did hear me say, "With all due respect," so we wanna follow the protocols here.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, councilmen.
Good afternoon. Albert A.J. Turner, ninety-seven-twenty Mississippi Street, Beaumont, Texas, seven-seven-seven-zero-seven. Question from Mr. Bibbs, I notice other poker rooms didn't have a liquor license, can you kind of explain the advantage of you having one, with the control settings and the liability actually falling on, you know, the owner versus, you know, BYOB, and they can walk out on their own merit in an incident like that? Can you kind of explain to everybody in here the advantage of the liquor license versus not having it?
The advantage is everybody's got control, you know, you have the, well, at the area in the back, where people can blow back the smoke, so you won't be allowed inside, so you can also, you know, let it close, or the plant is gonna have, and people go back there and have their drinks also, but as far as, take a look at all of the front of this establishment, even though there is a liquor store right next to us and across the property, you know, who can know, you know, drinking out in front, that's when you call it clear. You know.
Councilman, I was just giving you some microphone time and publicity here, so it worked.
Yeah, election in two more years.
Any other comments? Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the gentleman, and he did a good job explaining his operation, we heard from the staff, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve PZ twenty-two thousand one thirty-six.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Madam Mayor, we're all yours.
Yes, thank you all for coming. There's nothing else? We're adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a great afternoon and evening.